Good evening, everyone. I now call to order the special session of the Board of Commissions of the City of Tarpaulin Springs on Thursday, March 3rd, 2022 at 6:30 PM. We received an email from Commissioner Terapani stating that he will not be attending the meeting this evening due to the childcare conflict and his request and excuse. Need a motion?
Motion, excuse.
Roll call, please.
I'm sorry, do we have a second?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
Sorry. Commissioner Vaticiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Lahuzis?
Yes. Also, we need a roll call for the meeting, please.
Mayor Lahuzis?
Here.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Here.
Commissioner Terapani is absent and excused. Commissioner Donovan?
Here.
Commissioner Vaticiotis?
Here.
We're now going to the public comments on the items that will not be discussed this evening. If you have any comments, please come forward to the podium, state your name and your address. You'll be given four minutes. Do you have any comments? Okay. The only item that we have on the agenda tonight is the strategic plan update. It will be presented by Angela Christ. We will have a presentation, and then we're going to go to the public comments, followed by the BOC discussion, and then we're going to have a vote to approve the authorization to proceed with the Phase Two. Ms. Christ? And Ms. Vincent, too. Both of you guys.
I'll do a handoff. Renee Vincent, planning and zoning director. So, just a little background for anybody listening. So, back in the summer, last summer, the Board did authorize a contract and scope of services with University of South Florida Institute of Government in partnership with Collaborative Labs to develop a strategic plan for the city. And so, since that time, they have been engaging the public and employees through various methods. And so, Angela is here to bring us full circle on Phase One and then seek authorization to go ahead and move forward with Phase Two in the scope of services. So, with that, I'll just turn this over to Angela, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Renee. Mayor Commissioners, glad to be here tonight. It's a lovely night, actually. So, very excited about this project. Just want to say it's been a wonderful partnership with SPC. And in addition to that, I think we've come a long way in almost nine months. And so, just really briefly, I just want to quickly share with you what I'm going to go over. I'm going to talk a little bit about everything that we've completed in Phase One. And I like to think of Phase One as data collection. This is our opportunity to gather data from you, the mayor and commissioners, from the residents, from the employees, in various different forms, including surveys and focus groups. Then, the commission discussion will be really on three things. It's a draft vision, some draft guiding principles and core values, and then some draft emerging strategic themes. And then, we'll discuss next steps. So, I really think you guys deserve a round of applause for all of the things that we have been able to accomplish. As you can see, we conducted a strategic planning workshop. We've met with the staff and senior leadership, citizen engagement sessions, stakeholder interviews, surveys, focus groups, and today is number seven, we're here tonight. So, while this looks really neat, getting here was really messy. And so, I just want to briefly go over some numbers with you. As I mentioned, we held a strategic alignment workshop with the commission, and that was held back in July of 2021, on July 17th. Following that, we held a senior leadership team meeting with the city manager, and that was on August 3rd. We reviewed the project plan and the timeline and discussed some core values and guiding principles. We held a citizen engagement virtual session on August 26th of 2021, and we had 48 residents attending that. I conducted key stakeholder interviews from the 25 names that you provided me between September 28th and October 15th. We also administered a resident feedback survey during mid-October to early November of 2021. And we conducted an employee survey, which was administered in late November of 2021. We held an employee focus group on December 3rd of 2021 with 22 employees in attendance. And then, we also held two community forums, the first being on January 20th of 2022 with 33 attendees, and one on February 2nd with 23 attendees. And those forums were held in an in-person and virtual format. And so, what you see here is really a compilation of a lot of the data that we collected from all of the things that I just mentioned. And so, what I'd really like to do, I just wanted to mention this briefly. We did discuss this. If you recall, on December 14th, I provided you with a lot of this data when I came to one of your work sessions. And so, just really briefly about the resident survey, I just want to state that, as I mentioned, it was conducted in mid-to-late October, early November. Excuse me. It was in a web-based format. We made a lot of effort to distribute it with the city through a number of mediums, including local media, social media accounts, and a direct link on the city's strategic planning webpage through Connect Tarpon. In total, there were 316 completed surveys that were received, and the sample is slightly over-representative of higher-income homeowners within the city of Tarpaulin Springs. Okay, just very briefly, also wanted to mention the employee survey. Again, this was administered in a web-based format between November 5th and November 30th of 2021. Each employee received an email link and an invitation to complete the survey. The survey was distributed to 348 employees with a total of 215 complete responses. So, the response rate, excuse me, was at 62%, which is very good. Okay. So, I just wanted to mention this. So, as we went through all of that data and spent months collecting it, excuse me, my allergies, what we began to see are these kind of what we would call high-level strategic themes emerging. And they probably look a little familiar to you because when we first started out, when we did the strategic alignment work session with you, some of these came to the top. And so, we took these and we used them to go into our community forums. So, if you remember, I stated we had two community forums, one in January, one in February. These up here are the citizens' priorities of the people who attended. So, we had 33 in one group and 23 in another, okay, in both community forums. These up here are their priorities from those forums. So, it's not necessarily representative of the whole entire process, but this is new information since the last time we met in December. So, I just wanted to share a couple of them with you. I don't think that any of these are probably new to you when you look at culture, heritage, and preservation. Obviously, we've heard a lot about providing opportunities to sustain, strengthen, and protect local cultural traditions and the heritage. We've heard a lot about having historic walks or tours of the downtown area and establishing an identity for the entire community, again, while maintaining that historic preservation, that culture, but also being able to support tourism and where you're wanting to go in the future. So, from that, again, this was in community forum two. We conducted with SPC a prioritization exercise, and I'm not going to go through each one of these. I just want to go through the first one and kind of explain to you why we did what we did so that you can see. So, if you look up here, the residents were divided into groups, and we use this because it shows impact versus doability. And I want to make it clear that, again, this was the residents completing this, right? And so, it is saying, well, we believe that a priority of sea level rise and flooding and looking for grant opportunities could have a really high impact on our city, but it could be really, really difficult to do, right? That's what this means. So, if you look all the way to the far right and you see the far-right green, have historic walking tours of downtown area and fix maps, again, looking at items of historical interest. So, in their minds, it could have an impact around a three, so I'd say mid-high impact, and probably around 3.5, around that as well, in terms of doability being easy. So, when we go into the next phase of this process, you definitely will want to take these into consideration because this is something that your residents are saying, but this may be something that what we would call is kind of low-hanging fruit, right? It may be an objective that you may be able to accomplish, and so, it's really important that you begin to look at impact versus doability as we get further into Phase Two of the process. Again, growth and development. Again, this is from the residents. Developing a comprehensive plan that manages growth and focuses on smart development. Looking at equitable areas or identifying areas, we heard a lot for revitalization, again, not necessarily new development. Again, you can see here, this is that prioritization matrix. When you look up here, you see really the two in the bright yellow are the ones that really may have the highest impact and, again, in the residents' minds could be easier to do. And those would be the identity, looking at areas for revitalization over new development as well as the smart growth. Looking at mixed use is an example, planned community, et cetera. Okay, visionary leadership. Again, integrating city leadership and community members' voices in this process, ensuring that there's resources and tools available. I think that's something wonderful that the citizens recognize that that's needed if you're going to do a strategic plan. Again, here, impact versus doability. One of the things that's in the top far right-hand quarter, so when you do these, what you want to be right here, if you're in this top-right quadrant, right up here, those are the things that you really want to be focusing on, right? Because they're going to have the greatest impact and they're the easiest to do. And so, this one talks about being able to have elected leaders create communication with citizens, having, it's really about that, excuse me, that two-way open dialogue. And then, obviously, ensuring that the resources and tools are available for city staff and for you and the citizens to carry out the strategic plan. Infrastructure, again, sidewalks, signage, looking at, you know, obviously, modernizing roads, waterways, utilities. We heard a lot about, you know, some possible coordination between Tarpon and FDOT to improve traffic patterns. And then, obviously, maintaining the dredging of the waterways and the canals. We actually heard that all the way through collecting the data and everything we did. Oops, sorry about that, went the wrong way. Okay, so, for infrastructure, we only see one in that top-right quadrant, and that's really fixed sidewalks, have better signage, and put in crosswalks and better lighting. Community engagement and involvement, again, from the citizens' point of view. Again, communications is here. There was a lot about possibly a partners coalition, looking at being able to either connect with more nonprofits or with social service agencies, better use possibly of social media and the website, like Connect Tarpon is great. We heard a lot of positive things about that, so kudos to all of you. But again, here are just some examples of what the residents see as priorities. And then, again, this top right-hand corner, the partners coalition was at the very, very top of this. So, looking again at partnering with agencies, whether it's nonprofits or social service agencies for the elderly, mental health, et cetera. Again, communication, social media, website, that seems to be a really hot topic with the citizens. Okay, quality of life. So, you'll see some overlap between these and the previous ones in terms of community engagement, but a couple that are different, excuse me, would be safety and security for residents. Heard a lot from connecting downtown to the sponge docks and the sponge docks to downtown, and then, the whole idea of not just affordable housing, but attainable housing. And so, I think this is very telling in a lot of ways, and I think it's good that your citizens realize that some of the items that they'd really like to see are really hard to do in this category. And so, they'll have a really good impact, but I think they recognize that it's not simple. And so, for example, you know, when you talk about more transportation services, yes, it's going to have a high impact, but it's going to be very difficult to do because you may not exactly have control over that. And I think it's great that your residents recognize that. And then, again, if you notice on this chart, you'll see in the top-right quadrant, there's nothing there. There's nothing that's really easy to do and is going to have a huge impact. But there are some things that you could probably do that, you know, are not the easiest, but they would still have a high impact. And so, you'll want to take a look at those, especially around the safety and security for residents, and making sure that, you know, there's equitable division of resources within all areas of the city. And so, really, tonight, since you had received a lot of this information back in December, the focus really is around, as I mentioned earlier, and I highlighted draft because, again, we're only at the end of Phase One, right, which is data collection. So, these are really vision, guiding principles, and core values. And so, this is just an example of a draft vision that hasn't been vetted with anybody, obviously, just a collection of data. And so, I'll just read it to you. Again, it is a draft. "As one of the most historic small cities in Florida, Tarpon Springs seeks to provide a safe and secure quality of life by preserving the past, enjoying the present, and innovating for the future while sustaining its natural resources, green spaces, beaches, parks, and river." So, that's just an example of a culmination, some of the stuff you've probably heard before, but we did want to share it with you. Now, if you remember, again, these are all draft. If you remember in some of the other presentations and discussions, these were kind of the five core values that really popped out. Citizens first, which thank you, I can't, I think it was Commissioner Donovan, wasn't it? That was yours. I remember that because I thought that was just, that was great. So, communication, quality of life, fiscal or financial responsibility, and then visionary leadership. And remember, you as leaders will have an opportunity to go through, to discuss these, to bring consensus to them, but these are those, remember, these are these behaviors that are non-negotiable. So, this is what residents, residents have given feedback on these in terms of the areas, employees have, but this is really what you would adopt as a commission to say, this is how we're going to interact with one another. And then, again, the strategic themes. And then, next steps for success. And so, as I mentioned, we have completed Phase One of the process, which was all of the data collection, which brings us into really where the work really, really begins for you. And so, the next part of the process is Phase Two, and that includes a newly-elected orientation. We do have, we have a tentative date, but obviously, that's not set in stone. We are happy to work with the mayor and commission, but it's really important that whomever your newly-elected officials are, that we're able to bring them up to speed on the process. Following that, we would hold a forum with the mayor and commission and the city manager and executive leadership, and that would be a six-hours forum. And again, this is really going a lot more in-depth into some of the data. I know I've presented to you twice, and it's been very high-level, but the point of this workshop or this forum would be to dive into the data a little bit more in-depthly, to begin to develop and to look at what I mentioned, the mission, or, excuse me, the vision, the guiding principles and core values, as well as goal statements and objectives, and trying to make those goal statements and objectives smart, right? And then, also, following that, we would then work with senior leadership and the staff to kind of hone in on what you had suggested, holding a second community forum, excuse me, holding a second forum for commissioners, and then, we would begin to develop a final report. So, this is really where the work begins for you as the mayor and commission. And then, we would present the final report to the commission. So, that's where we are. That would be Phase Two of this process. And Phase Three, I'm not going to go into, but that's the whole implementation plan. All right? I tried to make it brief.
Thank you.
Hopefully. It's so much information, so.
Thank you, Ms. Christ. Thank you for the presentation. We're now going to the public comments. Do we have any public comments on this item? This is very important. We'd like to hear from the people. Anyone wants to speak? We hear none? Ms. Christ? We do not have any public comments, so we're just going to be in discussion right now.
Okay, fantastic.
Okay, thank you. And first, I want to thank you for the presentation and it was, and actually, all the workshops and surveys that you conducted. Couple of things that I'd like to discuss is the results that actually came from different surveys. It's no different from the workshops, discussions that we had. Seems like a similar thing. So, seemed like the residents and the electoral officials, we all on the same page. We have the same goals and the same concerns. I'm going to start with the residential, with the resident survey. It indicates that the residents see the city as a good place to leave. They like the small-town atmosphere, the heritage and the culture that we have, which is unique, but also, they have some concerns. Traffic?
Yes.
Transportation, that's the two items that we are very, difficult for us to address as local because the transportation adds, you know, under the county jurisdiction, and the traffic, you have US-19 and you have the alternate 19, which is two highways belong to the state, and we have many county roads. So, even though that is very, very important for the electoral officials, it's going to be a big challenge. Future development, this is going to be very important because we really don't have much land left. So, we need to have a smart growth there. And how to communicate with the residents, they suggested to use emails and text alerts. But also, being that the technology is changing so much, we still have to have, you know, emails, I mean, should have the Facebook and other social technologies that are available to right now, and I'm sure that's going to change two years from now, probably new technology is going to appear. So, all that, it needs to be a continued process and improvements. But also, we have an older population here. I believe it's near 25% of our population are seniors, and they're not very good when it comes to use computers and stuff like that. So, we still have to use the old ways of doing things, mailing the information with the water bill, communicate with the HOAs. We have to use all these tools that are available to us, not just emails and texting is what I'm trying to say. All of them are just important because we have a mixed population here in Tarpaulin Springs. The first forum, there were 32 participants, and the second forum was 23, total of 55. Do you see that as a good participation? 55 people with a 27,000, no? What we should do different to get more people to be involved?
So, that is a great, that is a great question. So, we've done a couple of things in other communities across the state. And so, I think, let me just back up and say, I think there were a few challenges related to the community forums because we were intended to be in person.
Yes.
And then, Omicron hit, and so, there was a lot of individuals who, you know, preferred the virtual option. So, we ended up doing a hybrid option. However, I think there is also an opportunity to actually go into the specific neighborhoods where you may have, let's say, you know, a church, or you may have a community center. And so, you're able to gather information that way, in other words, going to the citizens instead of saying, hey, join us virtually or join us, you know, in person. And so, that's one option. However, I will say that, to your point, when you started making comments, if you look through the data, you're very accurate in the sense that even though there were 55, I believe it was, individuals, all of the information that came through in the resident survey and the employee survey and with the citizens is all very consistent moving forward. And so, I'm not sure that having a larger group would have necessarily changed the data.
Okay.
So, I think it goes back to wanting to engage citizens and that two-way communication between them and allowing them to have an opportunity to speak, but at the same time, I do not believe it would have changed the data.
I like that you say that you're going to take that to the people, send the people taking it to us. I like that. And I will suggest that we get with the HOAs, may perhaps, we can have some town hall meetings with them. In a location will be very, very convenient to the people to be there if you do that early because some people like to. If you do that early, because some people like to, 6:30. A lot of people is too late for them.
Yeah, and I think that's something that you could do once the goal statements and the objectives have been created. That's something that you could definitely do with those. Because really, right now, we were in that data collection phase of really the wants and needs. And so the next phase is getting their input really on the statements and the objectives.
Yes, thank you. Moving down to the employee survey. That's very, very positive. The employees, the, the survey indicates that employees are very happy with their jobs. And also, they're very happy with the working environment that they have here. And I, you, you got 215 responses, which I think this is excellent. Very, very good number. But I, I have to tell you that I'd like to give the credit, not only to the BOC, but to the staff. Why we have these kind of positive response for the employees. I remember years ago, I don't know if I've shared that with you or not, but back in 2007, when I was elected as a commission, we had an issue here in Tarpon Springs. We were, could not keep employees here in Tarpon Springs because the environment wasn't as good and the pay was terrible. So many things were improved, including the, the benefits. And we brought the, the pay to be more comparable with the other cities. And the working environment got much better. So I think that has a lot to do with that. And hoping, and I know the well, the, the new commission is going to continue doing that to make sure that our, our employees are happy. Because I believe, I've been a manager for many years. A happy employee is a productive employee.
Yes, and I think one interesting statistic that came out of the employee survey was that, and I want to just make sure I get the percentage right. So going back to what you were saying, 89% said that their individual values, so their values as a person are consistent with the values of the city. And that's a really high number. You don't normally see that, right? So to me, what that says is that people are vested, that their passion, that they feel connected, that they're not, as an employee, it's not just a job to them. And I think that, that, that speaks really volumes for the staff.
Yes, yeah, they do, thank you. The, my observation is a lot of the citizens' recommendations, they already been happening. We already doing it. Obviously, we do not communicate as well as we should. So they know that it's happening, that we're doing that already. I think we, this is an, a, an area that we need to improve. We mentioned earlier any different ways that we can communicate with people. So being that we have a different age groups and, you know, technology is different than it used to be and the different ways to communicate is different. That's something that we need to be adopting that.
Yeah, and a lot of times in communities, we see something that you would maybe consider going forward is doing some type of citizen opinion, is what we call it. So what we did is, we did a resident feedback, right? We were looking for feedback around really strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. But as you move forward in this process, it's really important that you have a mechanism, whether it is social media, whether it is text or email. But we do citizen opinion surveys. And a lot of small cities to large cities do citizen opinion surveys. And they're a little bit different than a resident feedback. And so that's something you may want to consider because they really look at key issues that the city may be facing in terms of as it relates to budget or a rainy day fund or maybe it's transportation. And those types of surveys allow you to dive into some of the issues a little bit deeper. And so again, that would be something that we would talk about as we get into phase two that you may want to consider.
Question to ask you on the culture, heritage and preservation. This is draft citizen priorities. What value do you give to those opinions that we got?
So again, I think it goes back to what I was saying at the, at the very beginning of this area, which is you have to put it in reference or within a frame that there were 55 people who participated. And so I think the value is, again, there is consistency. When you look at this, it's very consistent with what you came up with at the very beginning. You were the first people we met with. What the staff came up with. What the employees and staff, I mean senior staff. What the res-, what we heard from the residents in terms of the resident survey and what we heard from the employee survey. So what this says to me is that we're headed in the right direction. Doesn't mean that all of these things are going to end up in the plan as a goal. But we heard the residents, we're bringing the information to you. And now it's our job to help you develop those goal statements and objectives that are encompassing of all of the data and the direction the city wants to go.
Okay. So you're going to use that like a database to pull information?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
This is what you're going to use it for? Because there are some things here that, you know, they're not realistic priorities.
Absolutely.
So I don't want to go through that.
No, no, that's not what we're here for tonight.
I want to make sure that, yes, it's good information to be used for, but it cannot be used exactly what's on there.
Oh, absolutely. Again, this is coming, I'm, I'm bringing you information directly from the citizens. This is what they said. It hasn't been vetted in terms of doability or maybe you're already, you know, nine tenths of the way done with some of these and you only have one tenth left to go. So none of that, no research has been done on any of these to determine if they're viable or not viable. This is just to share with you what your residents are saying.
Okay. Ms. Chris, I just want to tell you that I am very happy with the outcome of the, the study that we have done so far, the phase one.
Thank you.
And I believe that the data, data collection that you have is very, very useful. And we should be able to move into the phase two. But as you know, we have an election coming up. So we're going to have a new board. As a matter of fact, three members of the board are going to be gone. One is going to stay for sure. That's Vice Mayor Carr. And Commissioner Vaticiuras is up, you know, he's in the election process. So that is, I'm glad that we're going to have a re-rotation for a new board so we can bring him up to speed with what's going on, so they can continue with that. And I like to continue with, with this process. I think it's going to be a very, very good process. I'm looking forward, nary to the, to the second phase. But the third phase was going to be the implementation to get it done. So you think probably, probably a year from now, it'll be completed?
Yes, so, well, actually, phase two, if we can stay on target, I would think that, again, a lot of things can happen. I would say by like September, we should be able to have a draft report. Now, if we choose to add in going into some, working with some of the HOAs, that may push it back. But I don't necessarily see it taking an entire year. I would say eight to 10 months to get us through the next phase, if that. It depends on your newly electeds and if we're able to hit the ground running.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Carr.
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to confirm, there's like A, B, C on this item? We're talking about all three of these right now, right?
Well, we, we already have the presentation that's been completed. We are now doing the discussion. And after that, I will entertain a vote to, to accept the, to approve the phase one. And also to continue with the phase two.
Okay. Just for clarification, we're not giving you suggestions for phase two right now, right? All right, this is just what your presentation is based on, is the discussion for tonight?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I did notice a few things. Thank you for the presentation. There's obviously, the, the lack of citizen engagement was kind of a bummer to see. Only 50-plus people out of 25,000-plus people that live in the, residents that live in the Tarpon Springs. So I agree with Mayor. It would be nice to see some additional meetings held at the different neighborhoods, whatever that may look like. I'm not sure what it looks like. Also, maybe with some of the little leagues, different organizations that go on also within the city as well to, to give different perspectives and different demographics throughout the, throughout the city. There's a handful of things that I don't think were necessarily true from some of the citizen comments that you put in your comment. One was restoring free speech at City Hall. Some of those things, I'm not sure where those will end up landing in the agreement. I mean, should free speech happen, then 100%, but restoring free speech, that's, couldn't be further from the truth currently today. One of the things is too, is that elected officials are responsible to create communications with all citizens. Again, that's more of a staff situation. Our elected officials currently have that ability. They could come to a citizen, or a citizen could contact elected official anytime by calling his staff or secretary by emailing us, by contacting us on our cell phones, by seeing us out in the community. So there's plenty of ways for that to happen. But if you're looking for a communication for, it really needs to be between the staff and the citizens, and that's who needs to direct it. We set up, we set up here as the board to give direction to the staff. So I think there's just a couple of things that were in there that we need to make sure we clarify or come across clear in the strategic plan and not, you're putting additional responsibilities and duties on the board that, that we shouldn't be having, right?
And so what I would say to that comment is, again, what I said to the mayor, which was a lot of these haven't been vetted. Again, it's just sharing with you the data that was collected. However, what that does say to me, though, is that there either is a perception or a misunderstanding. And so I think part of the strategic plan, when you begin to get into the goal statements and the objectives, may be on an educational component around communication with the city and the staff.
Sure, makes sense.
And so that would be, so off the top of my head, while the citizens may have called out free speech or however you worded it, I think it's more of an issue of, okay, how do we provide tools or mechanisms to allow there to be communication and educate them on those tools and mechanisms? So there's a lot of things that go into it. Again, it was just sharing the data that was collected.
Okay. A couple of things, so there's a newly elected orientation on April 5th. This is actually before the new board sits in place?
Yeah, that was, we, we, we gave that date. We provided a date back in like July of 2021. And I'm sorry, I didn't take it off of there. The date is not set. That was just from like almost a year ago.
Okay, so Irene, I would imagine that we had to have a new, we had to have a sworn-in board to have a, a board meeting, right?
Correct.
That would make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. So it's on our?
That's, the swearing in is April 12.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that would be after April 12th then, at some point, not April 5th?
Yes, absolutely. And so I'm sorry that that was still on there and that was my fault. Renee reminded me to take it off and I forgot.
I just want to make sure, but like we have it in our, it's, it's on our website, actually, for the meetings that are held. And it's listed as new commission strategic plan workshop as well, too. So that's something I?
We need to, we need to, we need to at least say date to be determined. So we need to work, we need to fix that then.
Okay, great, all right. Thank you for clarifying that. Overall, I mean, it's, look, it, it's a lot of stuff that you'd expect from your city, right? Great infrastructure, safety, look for the future, respect the past, live, live today. So I mean, a lot of the things that were in there is just kind of like the no brainers that you see throughout all cities that you expect the commission and the staff to fulfill. So I'm happy to move this forward and move on to the next phase.
Thank you, Commissioner Donovan.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And thank you very much for your work up to this point. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for being here. One thing real quick, I just did want to get straight was the citizen priorities we're seeing on this PowerPoint, is that from, so that's from the January forum and the February forum?
Correct.
Right, so even though it has like similar themes to the respondent survey, the citizen survey, that is strictly from those two forums?
That is correct.
And the first one had, how many, it had 33 people, you said? And the second one had something?
I just want to make sure I give you, 33 on the January 20th one and 23 on the February 2nd one.
Okay.
So actually, the total is 56, not 55.
56. And were there any duplicates? Did you guys count for duplicates at those meetings?
There were a couple, yes. I did go back and look. I want to say maybe five, five, around, around five duplicates.
Okay, so ultimately, probably just about 50 people or maybe less than that.
Correct.
And that's not a knock on you guys. I mean, like you said, COVID's going on. We're doing what we can, reaching out to the residents. And I think, I think that, that's kind of the hardest part is to determine how much you need as far as citizen engagement goes is, you know, how many residents would be enough? Would it be 100? Would it be 1,000? Would it be all 25,000? We go knock on every single door in town? That's kind of the, the hard point for you guys. Do you, do you have an idea or like an ideal number where you're going to get some sort of statistically significant sample or?
No, so here's what I would say. First of all, we have done several of these the past several months. Actually, we were just, we were just doing one in Cape Coral and Newbury in Volusia County a couple of weeks ago. And all cities that we are engaged with are having problems with community forums in terms of getting people there. If it's not specific to say transportation or place making for doing the comprehensive plan, we're seeing a lot of struggles with people attending community forums. So that's the first thing I would say. The second thing I would say is that it, it kind of goes to, when you do a statistically sound survey, right? Like you, you have a number and you know, usually your sweet spot is around 600, I think it is, to 800, right? If you do a statistically sound survey. So if you're doing a survey in the state of Florida, if you get 20,000 responses, it's, it's not going to change the data if you have 600 to 800 responses. It's kind of the same thing with the community forum. The majority of the time, I've done forums with 200 people in them and I've done forums with 30 people in them for the same organization. And the data was the same coming out. And so I think the challenge is for elected officials is that they see, well, that's really not a true representation of our community. You only spoke to 56 people or only 56 people attended. But remember, it's only one data point. There's, the other data points include the resident survey, the employee survey, the data that we collected through the stakeholder interviews. I mean, there's a lot more than just the community forums.
No, absolutely. And that's something we, we face, you know, for even our regular session city meetings is that, you know, we're getting represented from public with people that are available on a weeknight, which a lot of parents, stuff like that, those types of demographics are not going to be. I did have a question on the doability scale.
Yes.
I just want to know who determines the doability? Because one of these things mentioned a monorail and that wasn't listed as difficult.
Well, again, remember, it was, that was done with the citizens. So it's their interpretation of whether they think it's easy or difficult.
Okay. So that was just up to, that was like a, a popular vote at the meeting?
Well, they were broken into groups. We broke them into three separate groups and they worked in a group and had discussion and then said, you know, this is what we think. We think this would be easy, hard, et cetera. So.
Okay. The only thing that I, I have to suggest, if you could go to the vision really quick?
Yes.
And surely somebody can wordsmith this better than I could.
Okay, one second. I'm going to figure out where I am. Oh, sorry.
No, no worries.
I went the wrong way. I'm not used to your. Should be right. Uh-oh. I know. Just don't look. Okay, there you go.
So the first line, I like what it's trying to do, but I, I think it's, it's either redundant because it says, "As one of the most historic small cities in Florida." And then it says, you know, "Tarpon Springs seeks to provide a safe and secure quality of life by preserving the past." I think preserving the past covers that part, but I think if we're going to leave it in, we should be more specific. It should be like the first incorporated city in Pinellas County. Because as one of the most historic small cities in Florida, that's just kind of a generic, you know, I could say the greatest city in the world and we could leave that in there. So I, I think if we're going to go for the most historic small city, we might as well make it specific and say it's the first incorporated city in Pinellas. And then just on the end line, one, I would add an excerpt about, you know, our local economy. So I think you could leave it in there and also take out a lot of the specifics that are natural resources. Like it says natural resources and then it mentions four specific natural resources. So I, I think, when I think of natural resources, I think of green spaces, beaches, parks and a river. So I think maybe that last line could be changed to, "And innovating for the future while sustaining its local economy and natural resources."
Very good.
And then I'll just clean it up a little bit. But again, that's something you can take it or leave it. Just, I just was looking at the vision statement.
Those are great suggestions.
But that's all I got. Other than that, thank you guys very much and looking forward to see what the new board does with it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Vaticiuras.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Ms. Chris.
Good evening.
And thank you very much. And I'm still excited as ever with the data. And, you know, if you look at some of the national polling and you look at the, the sampling of that, you've got like? you've got like two hundred and, two hundred and fifty responses out of three hundred and fifty-three million residents, and that'll tell you who's fifty-three percent are in favor here, and so, it, I agree with you, if we had some of these things that were close together, maybe we'd have to have a larger sample group to see if those priorities would break out in something more definitively, but I think we've had some pretty good separation on those things. I also believe perception is important, so I appreciate you basically telling it the way it is. You tell us exactly what the residents tell you, because we're not there. You're the only person that tells us how the residents feel, so I think that's always very important. I'm just going to ask some questions, and they're constructive observations. I don't have an issue with moving to Phase Two. The vision statement, to me, is probably the heart of the strategic plan. I mean, it is the thing that actually defines Tarpin Springs. And I was wondering, who wrote this one?
Yes, so that was me.
Okay.
So it was just a, working with our partners and our staff to say, we have to start somewhere, and that is, let's start here, and this is exactly the discussion that we heard from the other commissioner, was, this is where we're, it's a starting point. By no means was it meant to be the one you approved or anything. We have a long way to go before we get there. But it was just to say, hey, this is what we're hearing and seeing in the data we collected.
I learned a long time ago, academicians write a little dryly. I've been told that. And I think sometimes a vision statement needs to kind of exude emotion and, and basically passion. For Tarpin, it would be something Zorba-like, if you will, and I think, I, I, I think, and the best way to describe the vision statement here is somewhat flat, in terms of if it's meaning and what you're trying to capture. My feeling is that as far as a vision statement, we've got some, let me just say, I think it ought to be written from, by people in, from Tarpin Springs
Oh, absolutely.
to cap, to capture that emotion. Even some of our youth, maybe, maybe get at some point in the future, maybe get some senior high school English students together, along with some of our creative writers here in town. There is a writing guild, if you will, here in town, and get them, make a presentation to them, and say, okay, put together a vision statement of what you want Tarpin to be, to look like in, in the future. And for example, the, I, I, it's not one of the most historic. For me, I mean, I'm from Tarpin, I grew up here. It is ground zero, it is the center of the universe. It is the most leading, diverse, unique, engaging, one-of-a-kind historic small cities in Florida. That's how I feel about it. Okay.
If I could comment, so I have just, and it may be a suggestion, not to cause any of us more work, one of the, one of the things, to your point about the youth, that I've seen in other communities is some type of contest, where they develop it, and then they would have to come, and they would present it to the mayor and commission. They would have to obviously use criteria that we would provide based on the data we've collected. But that's an opportunity to engage the youth as well, so it's more done from a contest standpoint.
A contest is fine, but we've got the word collaborative and the word, you know, a St. Petersburg collaborative laboratory. I would rather have it be a collaborative effort rather than a contest. I think, I mean, that's my sense of it, rather than one, one small group, or one person, or something coming up with, it's just, I don't, it depends on what the commission wants to do ultimately, but
Absolutely.
I'd rather it be a, something that you have some older folks in it, some younger folks, and see if we can come up with something that really defines Tarpin Springs, with what the youth want, as far as them wanting to live here in the future, what they are going to be expecting from a city commission to make it for them, when they're ready to have children living here and the whole thing. We really need to kind of push that one hard. Things like safety and security, those are synonyms. If you look it up, and maybe threw out of the four dictionaries, synonyms, safety and security are synonyms of each other. You know, safe, a safe and gratifying quality of life. I mean, things like that, you want to be, you want to enjoy being here, not just live, but you want to enjoy living here. You want to be gratified that you're here in Tarpin Springs. If you go to Slide Six, along with the vision, I'm starting backwards with the vision and moving forward. If you go to Slide Six, you'll see that, you'll see a little bit of the, for example, this starts out with things like, it, it says that we're going to provide a safe and secure quality of life, that sort of thing, but you, you look at Slide Six, it points out to certain problems that we've got right now
Yes.
that we need to actually overcome in order to get there. And you've identified some that are difficult, and I'm going to get to that in a minute, but there needs to be some kind of a, kind of a, you know, a, what would you call it? A reconciliation
Okay.
between the vision statement and what residents are saying that, hey, look, for this to be our vision statement, and I know that's going to get to your goals and objectives, and that, that's important, but there needs to be some reconciliation between the two, in that I've always viewed as vision statements as aspirational. In other words, we're not ever going to quite get there, but this is what we want to push to, and then when we approach it, we bump it up and make it even a little more, raise the bar on it a little further, a few years down the road, ten years, twenty years. I really hope that this strategic plan continues in perpetuity, will be updated from time to time. So I'm not going to get too excited if we don't capture everything this first round.
And if I could make a comment on that, I think it's really important to note, when you are developing a strategic plan, at least the way our methodology, it is not meant to be set in stone, to your point. It has to be flexible, it has to be adaptable, it, it's just the way that it is. If it's truly going to guide the organization, and how you're going to move forward, then you have to have flexibility and adaptability within the process and within the document.
I agree with that, that's not, with me, I understand that. As far as the vision statement, it shouldn't be subject to interpretation either. For example, you've got the word security in there, and let's say, assume that survives. What do you mean by security? So, you know, economic, there's various different types of security, and it's, you know, a safe and secure sort of thing, and I, I think we need to kind of be a little more specific in a vision statement, and maybe not get too broad, but really paint a picture of what we want Tarpin Springs to be. Let me see, I've got my notes here. And the same thing, and, and that comes up, this word secure, if you take your secure in your, well, let's see, this is Slide Six, right? So if you look at that very first statement up there, the perception, the quality of life perceptions are somewhat hindered, yet we've got the quality, quality of life in our mission statement. And, and so that's what I'm getting at, there ought to be some reconciliation, and, 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 you know, we recognize there's some issues, maybe not necessarily use quality of life in the vision statement, but something that kind of leaps over that, recognizing that we've got to work on the quality of life to get to this, to this aspirational goal that we are identifying in our vision statement.
Although ninety percent, if I could, is extremely high.
Yeah.
So, I mean, there were some, obviously, comments, if you will, in the survey around things that somewhat impacted quality of life, like traffic congestion, right? But ninety percent of people who responded said it's a good place to live. You don't normally see those high numbers, so. So it's the balance between ninety percent of those who responded say it's amazing.
Right. Right, and ninety percent are the silent majority, and the ten percent are the ones that show up here and basically say, we're not doing our jobs, and it's got to do with traffic and things of that nature. That, that's, I mean, I understand, but there's a reality of it as well. On Slide Twenty-five is where I get into, to what do you mean by security and the guiding principles, and that's in the vision as well.
Are you talking about this slide here, right?
Right, Slide Twenty-five. Let's see, where was it that I had that? What do you mean by security? Quality of life?
Oh, it's under quality of life. We are committed to providing high levels of safety, security, and welfare.
Right, I understand safety, but security and welfare, that, those are two somewhat broad, and I don't know whether the residents are expecting us to solve certain things that may be more responsible of the federal government, for example, or the state, or something like that, and I think we just need to be a little more clear in that, so there's no misunderstanding. And then when we get down to lower, a little less, a little lower in the vision statement, you can go back to that, we talk about innovating for the future while sustaining its natural resources, green spaces, beaches, parks, and, and this is where I'm getting at, people from Tarpin Springs. Bayous are extremely important to Tarpin Springs, we've got numerous bayous. And then it is the Anclot River. It's not just the river,
Right.
but it is the Anclot River, and it's a federally mandated channel that we've got there. So it's extremely important, probably the, I would say, one of the cornerstones of our economy is the Anclot River, and so I think it's important enough to point out. And then the other part of this, these are mostly, you've got listed here is, are natural resources, pretty much, but the sustainability also includes economic and also social issues as well. And, and I don't want to lose that aspect of it, the, as you would probably know, the sustainability is that, you look at it as a three-legged stool, any one leg, it doesn't stand by itself. So if we're going to have a sustainable community in the future, all three need to work together. The, in, in Slide Fourteen, the one thing that, and I do have another comment here, in Slide Fourteen, it says growth and development, and, and first of all, what, what do we mean by growth? Population, economy, we're almost built out. I would tell you, right now, based on the, the political trail, growth is somewhat of an incendiary word, if it's misinterpreted. Ms. Vincent understands what I'm talking about. So I think we need to be a little clearer, and perhaps ask the residents again at some point, what, what, you know, we've got growth in here, but are you interested in more people? Which I can assure you, they're going to probably say, not so much. Or do you want to do something in terms of growth, in terms of economy? And so there isn't anything in here on economic development that I saw, which is an extremely important, how do we move forward strategically for economic development? Up to this point, we've been pushing needs-based economic development. I've been pitching that we need to move to a place-based economic development, create places for people, to attract them to town, that sort of thing, which kind of gets back to some of the other things as far as housing, and also hotels and things like that for visitors. So that's very important. Also, you mentioned the comprehensive plan. I think that somewhere in those slides, there needs to be a little stronger reference. Again, it's like sustainability, strategic plan is the prioritization, but the city's comprehensive growth management plan is pretty much, identifies the needs and deficiencies, and that's going to be based on resident input in far as what they see, and also some of our standards that we use for community development. In other words, a healthy community by this standard has X number of ball fields per thousand people, or X number of acres of mini parks per thousand people, and that sort of thing. And then also, the sustainability action plan is going to be a very important aspect. So I've, I've mentioned this before, at some point, those three need to be integrated, and I think it's always a smart thing to work those two by name into whatever we do as far as so documents, so they're, they're not forgotten. The, I'm not sure, maybe, I can't remember, maybe one of the commissioners brought it up. As far as the definition of difficulty, I know that was discussed earlier. I also had a question on that. Who, who decides, I know, I think you suggested, maybe you partially answered it, that that came kind of out of the little focus groups that you had together, that they felt it was going to be difficult to do?
Correct.
But what's that based on, though? I mean,
It's their perception.
The perception, which is important. But in the reality, you know, we've got the perception, and so in the reality of, of how do we address that? For example, what I see as difficult to do is things that are outside of our control. State highways, county highways, we have no control over that. Some of these other things that you've got listed in there. The sea level rise that you had up in the upper left-hand corner, that, to me, that is within our control. We can do something about that, and if the residents feel that that's high enough priority, then we can do something about it, and it can move from that difficulty into something else. It just takes programming and, and funding. And up until this point, we've been relying heavily on grants. And so it's been a slow walk to get any achievement, and people are just, they're continually waiting. I mean, and at some point, we, it really affects quality of life. I mean, we've got a foot of water over the sidewalks at Craig Park, and at some times of the year, they see this every two weeks or something like that, people are doing a little head scratching as far as, why aren't we doing more about it quickly? And at some point, they're not going to be happy just hearing, well, we're waiting for grants. They're actually going to want something, and grants are one means of funding. There's other ways of funding, too, bonds and other things that could be done by a city government to pursue this a little quicker.
However, I would comment and say, I do think in one of the areas, the citizens did recognize that there will be tools and resources needed to accomplish a lot of this. So I, I think, again, while it is their perception, at the end of the day, I do think they recognize the challenges associated with accomplishing some of the issues that are important to them.
Right, I understand, but as far as the responsibility to the city commission to ensure that our economy is healthy and continues to grow, it's not good to have flooded sidewalks against, you know, within the main park every couple of weeks, and it just doesn't go well. We just, in my opinion, that, that's just an editorial comment, on this one really does have an effect on your plan. And I know that you've got a lot of data in here, and, and I think you just kind of threw it for information, right?
Correct.
And I think somewhere, there ought to be some, and it's, again, something to think about, maybe in Phase Two, and we'll get to that maybe in the, in the goals and objectives, and break out what's informational, actionable, and aspirational. In other words, some things were, okay, fine, but you're living in the wrong spot if that's what you're looking for. Some of it's actionable, that, yeah, it is real, we need to work on that, and others, it's just, you know, it's, forty, we're, forty-five percent of the city is water, which is an intriguing statistic for a town like ours. That's informational. They're not asking for anything to change, but that's just a part of our character. Let's see, the other thing, too, is, I may have not caught it, but the, the Phase Two, Item Two Point Two, which is the city manager, executive city leadership, which is the city manager, executive city leadership forum, the six-hour workshop, I guess, is what it would be. Do you, and I know, what would be the timeframe for that? Was that already discussed this evening? This, this is in your phase two, phase two, two-point-two?
Right, so our intent, excuse me, was to hold the newly-elected official orientation in April. Hold that first forum in May. The second forum would be in June, again, if we're able to stay on target. Hopefully, with some type of at least draft report by August.
This is the two-point-two would be in June?
Correct.
Okay. All right. That's all I have.
Anticipated.
Pardon me?
Anticipated date.
Right. That's all I have. Did you have something? Go ahead, Renee.
Yeah, this, we haven't, we haven't really discussed this and I don't want to try to hash it out tonight, obviously, but I did meet with the city manager and we put some tentative dates. We actually had the six-hour forum hopefully in like mid to late May.
Perfect.
So we're, we've got a couple of dates, but obviously we'll get through the election and then we'll figure that out.
And, and this isn't really, I mean, to some extent, it's going to involve you, Ms. Chris, but also largely, more largely, our, our planning director, that when we start getting into our goals and objectives and that sort of phase, it's going to have to mesh with the same sort of things we're doing with our growth management plan and also our sustainability action plan. I know one's leading much, we're, I think we're developing this one a little quicker than the comp plan, right?
Yeah.
So, but Ms. Vincent's going to have to keep a heads up on that to make sure that we don't outrun one or the other and that they will mesh together when we're done.
Absolutely. And both the sustainability plan and the comp plan should be part of this strategic plan somewhere.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm done, but the one priority, I mean, the highest important that I have is the vision statement.
Got it.
I really think it needs to be written by somebody.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
And I think there's, again, we, we are nowhere near anywhere done. It was just an attempt to say, "This is all the data and this is what we've collected. And here's just something we're starting with."
All right. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah, I enjoyed it.
Good.
It's a good presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Chris.
Thank you, Mayor.
The chair will take a motion to approve phase one.
So moved.
With the data collections with the BOC recommendations and to continue with the phase two.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? A roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticaris?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Aluzis?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
That concludes the special session agenda and then we go to staff comments. Chief Young?
No comments, sir.
Chief Attorney?
Mr. Carr.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
No comments, thank you.
Thank you for serving with us. Ms. Jacobs?
No comments, thank you.
Vice Mayor Carr?
I was at the, I missed opening day for baseball when my kids got sick at the time and, but I did make it out to the touch truck and I thought the staff did an incredible job overall. I've always enjoyed touch a truck as an adult, but seeing my kids was like so much even, like so much even greater, seeing them enjoy it. So I really appreciate the staff and everything that staff did. There's a lot of different departments that are out there. It was great to see all the staff interact with the public and it was great to see all the vehicles out there as well, too. So I just want to say a great job to the city manager and to the staff for putting on a great event.
Thank you. Commissioner Donovan?
No comments, thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Vaticaris?
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Well, I'd like to extend my deepest condolences to the Fackless family for passing of Mr. George Fackless. May his memory be eternal. And I'm wishing the Fackless family peace, strength during this difficult time. I just learned that this afternoon and George Fackless, who is a great person, I know him from my childhood. Well, that concludes the special session and it's adjourned at seven forty-one PM. Good night, everyone.